Okay, I'd like to call it a regular session in New Richmond exempted. The religious school district Board of Education. I'm going to get back to the session. With a review of the agenda. So the first thing is it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Sub move. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Yeah? Roll call.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Redford?
Yes.
All right. In public participation that I was presenting, so we'll move on to committee reports.
First committee report is the grant update. We had a meeting on the twentieth of April. We had a big project presentation by all twelve programs. Approved some overnight travel for the Skills USA competition and the FCCC LA competition up in Columbus. We approved two part-time paraprofessional positions for two programs that are bringing in thirty-five juniors for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, animal vet science and mental fabrication. Approved a resolution to support career technical education facilities expansion. Possibility that could happen. It's a governor's request for proposed by any budget. And at that time, when it was proposed, it was about two hundred million dollars to support construction of projects that would expand career technical education programs. And that day of our meeting, they were reevaluating it at a hundred million dollars. So cutting dollars already before you can get students. But they had a, the next thing on that they did was the twenty-seventh of April, had a community dinner held for anyone who wanted to participate, come for that. Just really a show off the campus. Then the nineteenth, this coming Friday, we've got the completion ceremony at Belt State High School. And then on the twenty-fourth will be the last day for the students. That's it. Questions?
C and I, we, I believe we met last week and we had four items on the board. On all of it, Mr. Miller, I can't find my notes on the sources of strength, so I don't know if you want to touch base on that.
I was just going to just wave topic.
Gotcha, gotcha. But tonight, Dr. Jill, we'll talk about our first reading on several new classes that will be offered at the high school. Tonight, we'll have a first reading on three new high school electric classes. And then also, we had a discussion in regards to the transition to algebra course offering next year for our freshmen. And then two items on the agenda tonight that Dr. Jill will also talk about. I will take her thunder away. Is the K-five math curriculum program that the elementary teachers have worked very, very hard and have come to some consensus that they really like this program. And that is called Bridges. And then our six-twelve staff have come up with the Envisions Math Program. And that those will both be on the agenda tonight for a first reading. That's all I have.
Yeah, awesome. Finance.
Finance committee met on May the ninth. We had two discussion topics. One, which Matt will be presenting tonight on our five-year forecast. And our second item was our supplemental contract review. It's been a while since we reviewed our supplemental contracts, our positions. And I think we're looking to make some changes, policies to better our district. So two big items, but pretty easy.
Okay. The other policy committee also met on May second, right after the career construction meeting. We went over the student parent handbook, which are on the agenda later for the first reading. And we also went over the coaches handbook, also on the agenda later to discuss. And then the same thing we discussed in the finance committee with the supplemental sound risks. So that was the policy committee update.
Last Friday, we had our safety committee notes on the board update, but certainly an item of importance for everybody here and also our community. Had tremendous conversation about creating administrative guidelines for the army of staff. Some really good feedback from our first responders. So I took that feedback and also we looked at a neighboring district who's already implemented this. And we discussed it as an admin team at a meeting after that. So our next step is to work with our board policy partner, Niola, and to craft these into a more formal format. So it's not imminent, but it will be coming soon in terms of the administrative guidelines for this. But we'll be in frequent contact with the board and with our community.
Yes. All right. Superintendent's report.
So it sounds cliched, but I can't believe we are here. We're two weeks away from graduation. We were just sitting in the auditorium for convocation. And you blink and here we are. So certainly the highlight of every school year is saying goodbye to a bunch of great kids. It's next Friday, six o'clock. We're hoping for better weather than what we had last year. So let's keep our fingers crossed.
It's okay till the end.
I'm sorry?
It's okay till the end.
It's a, it's a, literally. As common circumstances wrap it up, here comes the rain, right? We got it in. So anyway, looking forward to that. I was fortunate to attend a safety conference last week. It was put on by the FBI and the Secret Service. It was tremendous. It was, learned a lot. And what we're seeing in Claremont County is being experienced certainly throughout the state. It was Ohio-centered, it was Ohio-focused conference in terms of problems that we're seeing with our year. They made it very, very clear, but still, the number one problem facing schools. The number one problem facing schools, and you're gonna say, I know that already, bullying and harassment. They, and you know where most of the bullying and harassment is taking place?
So far.
Right there. And for all our parents, whoever's listening, I'm, parents, you gotta get on your kids' phones. You gotta get on their devices and see where they're at and what they're doing. So much damage is being done on these devices. So it was very insightful. And then they reminded us again, they said suicide is still the number two cause of death for those ages ten to fourteen. Think about that. Ten to fourteen, number two cause of suicide. So that affirmed in me that we're doing a lot of great things with our partnership with One Five, our focus on mental health, the supports that we attempt to give our students and our staff. And then, Mr. Wells, to your point, the next part of that rollout will be implementing sources of strength next year in all of our schools. Elementarys, middle and high school. Law requires school systems to provide instruction on suicide prevention and also violence prevention. There's only a limited number of approved programs that would qualify for this. Sources of Strength is one of those approved programs. So, and it's a great program and our high school principal has had experience with it. So that's why we went that direction. So it'll be K-12, but parents and kids will be hearing more and more about this. It, again, it's just an attempt to give our kids tools and to cope with adversity and problems that come about in their lives. The last thing, after I have the talking threes, our middle school walking tour of downtown New Richmond is still on for tomorrow. If the weather cooperates, then I don't think the weather's gonna cooperate. We're gonna try to pull it off, but if there's lightning and there's danger, certainly we would postpone or just look at another time. So if you're listening right now, we're still looking to have our middle school walking tour tomorrow. And Mr. Zimmerman, that's all I have for super tense report.
All right. Item seven on the agenda is acceptance of graduation candidates.
Speaking of graduations, at that time of year, I represent to the board for approval, the two thousand twenty-three graduation list.
All right. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the class of twenty-three, twenty-two graduation candidates as presented.
Also move.
One second.
Whoop. He's got it.
All right. Any discussion? I won't discuss any of that, buddy.
I'm looking for a scene. There it is. Last but not least.
Always will happen. All right. Roll call.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Redford?
Yes.
Congratulations. Okay. Item eight is first reading handbooks.
Thanks so much, Mr. Zimmerman. So it is time to present our student parent handbooks for approval. This is the first reading, no actual be needed tonight, but we'll be coming for approval in June. And let, we'll start with elementary. Jamie or Joe, who would be presenting the changes?
I will.
Thank you, Dr. Koomas.
So there's not much change to the elementary handbook. So we're just gonna kind of highlight, Joe and I talked, and there's only one major change that we wanted to share with you. Most of the changes that are in here for you to consider are just general cleanup changes. The one major change to the handbook occurs on page twelve, and that is the addition to language related to smartwatches. We have noticed in the elementary schools even that our students are utilizing smartwatches just like some of them are using, if they're using the smartwatch like a smartphone, texting, calling from their watch, we're going to treat it as a smartphone. If they're using it as a smartphone, we're gonna treat it like a smartphone. So the language in our handbook talks about if they have a smartphone, they're gonna keep it turned off in their bookbag till the end of the day. So if they're using their smartwatch like a smartphone, we're gonna treat it the same way. So if it becomes a distraction, if they're using it that way, they'll keep it turned off in their bookbag till the end of the day. So that's really the only major change. We did a lot of work on the handbook last year, so for the most part, the rest of the changes are just cleanup. So that's the only big change in the elementary handbook for next year.
Thank you, Dr. Koomas.
Any questions for us? Thank you.
Mr. Lilly is out this evening, but the changes are minimal for the middle school handbook. One item I did want to point out, I won't waste time trying to find the exact page that's on the student code of conduct, but we had added language at the elementary mill and the high school on any type of gang activity. Where before it was, you give one warning or something like that. There'll be zero tolerance. Every issue will be addressed. And that's a change in all three levels handbooks. So, Mr. Stewart, do you have the high school handbook?
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Just like Jamie said, we took a deep dive last year. We didn't do really, wasn't needing a lot of changes this year. But we made two changes, and we felt would be impactful for our students. The first one is a counselor kind of change. As you can see, last year and the previous year, I took out the split grades nine and eleven and ten and twelve, and they moved up with each grade level. I felt that we were kind of missing a beat. If you have a student in grade nine, grade eleven, it's two different types of situations, concerns and environments. And I felt putting one foot in each world was kind of taking away from the good they could do with one of the younger. So we decided to move our councils to lock them into two grade levels. So Mr. Trapp next year will be only nine and ten, and Mrs. Crotter will only be eleven and twelve. So they can kind of, they can deepen their dive into those concerns with those kids in that age level. So we're all on board with that. We're looking forward to seeing those changes for next year. The other is a change I've talked about in these meetings before, I believe it's on page twenty-seven, I think, Mr. Miller. The state is requiring that we still have a financial literacy course. We're gonna implement that next school year to our sophomore class. That will be replacing our college and career readiness course. But we are taking the power standards out of the CCR course and adding those standards into the financial literacy piece. So I've kind of taken the best of both worlds and put them in. We're looking forward for that course to have a great impact on our students' kind of financial planning and real life planning moving ahead for next school year. And those are the two major changes that we had at the high school, as well as the gang. Where we just know what to talk about. Any questions?
And so I understand Mr. Kozlowski is, is...
He's a family today, so he gets it too far.
So he's sending you. And how blessed are we? So just for our community, just for our community, we started a year or so ago an athletic council. It's now with recent board act, it's now board committee. It's a really great committee. A lot of positive things have come out of this committee, a lot of discussions and action items. One of those actions items was the creation of a coaches handbook. Sounds maybe commonsensical, but especially people who are non-teachers and probably fifty percent or so who are coaches aren't laypeople. They're not, and they don't understand the way schools operate. So why not give them a common set of expectations? When you coach New Richmond, here's kind of how we expect things to be done. And so it's, Mr. Kozlowski headed up the project, our assistant principal. And Mr. Stewart, I don't want to steer too much more of your thunder, so...
Yeah, so like Mr. Miller said, some good work done by Mr. Koz. He really, he really took this on board and ran with it. So I want to give him the credit. The biggest reason is, like Mr. Miller said, we needed, we needed common expectations from middle to high. We found there were some differences in guidance and expectation from junior high to high school coaches, and we felt that was unnecessary. It should be a continuation from middle to high and not necessarily a difference in expectation. So we put out this handbook to align, streamline expectations for all of our coaching staff. It's kind of put it into three different sections. First one, first few pages talks about certifications, going through that process, what forms you need, how to get current and stay current to be a coach at New Richmond schools. The middle part's about sports foundation and our monetary policy, keep that all transparent for our school community, how we raise money and where it goes. And the third is kind of a legal aspect, there's some civil rights kind of language in there as well and some title nine information, so that's upfront for everybody to see as well. So I think it was much needed, and I think it will go a long way to kind of maintaining some kind of cohesion if you can get on the high school practices.
And to that point, I like the section we've added, it's on page five. Because we should allow our head coaches to help supervise what happens at the lower levels and what schemes are running, how practices are ran, and coaches and so forth. But again, we want to make sure that our head coaches understand, here's what the expectations are. And we have several pages on page five, head coach and program coordinator expectations. And so it's really, it's really, really good. It's very, very good. And again, just for a first read.
Yep.
Did Mr. Kozlowski tell you to sing the fight song?
He asked me to, but I said no. It's live screen, no, I'm good. But he did a lot of good work on this, and I gotta give him all the credit. He took this on and ran with it. I think it's a really good product. So we're very proud of you.
Thanks to all of the speakers. Thank you so much. And Mr. Zimmerman, that's the first read.
Okay. Next on the agenda is OSBA contract agreement.
Thank you. We're gonna enter into a contract agreement with the Ohio School Boards Association to the search for a treasurer. They've helped us in the past, and we've reached out to them again. And here's the task, is there a contract to do so?
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the OSBA contract agreement as presented.
Also move.
Second.
Second.
I can second too.
All right. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Well, I'll speak up. I guess it's public, but Matt, we do appreciate everything you've done for us the last twenty-some years here in this district as the director of technology. And in the last few years, it's our treasure. We appreciate how you've come in and really have helped this district and this board, really in the taxpayers, to really understand what truly is going on with our power plant situation and our levies and things like that. So we will miss you. It seems like the treasurer position here is a revolving door. We were hoping to keep you for another ten, twelve, twenty years. That we had money and we didn't have to blame you, that the treasurer was spending our money somewhere. But thank you for all your time and all your service here to us, New Richmond.
Thank you very much.
Good.
It's a loss. It's a loss, a loss for our district.
Leaving us better. You're leaving the district better.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Redford?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is item ten, human resource item.
Yes, Mr. Zimmerman, just several items on the consent portion of human resource. At that time of year, again, where people make life decisions, retire, move to another district, those staff members are listed there. We will miss that experience if that leaves our district. But then on the other hand, we're happy to be able to bring in some great young teachers. And listed here are the next group of teachers we're gonna bring in. Request approval for one substitute. Request for extended days for two of our staff members. Ms. Justice was a mid-season placement, so she was never approved for extended days. She'll help wrap things up at the high school this June. And also just a reminder to our community, as a part of our cost-saving measures, we reduced a head count at central office a year ago. And we've done just fine. We've done fine during the summer. It's a bit more challenging to have coverages with people, because we wanted to take the vacation to the summer, so it was slower. So Bridges Smith, who's one of our three ladies here, has agreed to come in and work an extra ten days as it's up to, as needed. Student success plan coordinators funded by Grant Career Center for these staff members to work for our kids and create their career portfolios. So also the time of year contract recommendations. And these staff members are being recommended for a two-year contract. Then the next tab is for our certified, our teachers. We have one request for continuing contract, a litany of two-year contracts. And then next after that is one year. Our exempt employees. Our classified contract employees for the two years, and then the one years. So those are all the contract recommendations. And then the last item, again, we are the flow-through for our staff members who work our postseason baseball, softball and track workers. We're reimbursed by the Southwest District, but I'm asking approval to pay these staff members. And they're listed in the attachment. That is the consent items, Mr. Zimmerman.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve items ten A through ten J.
Sub move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Redford?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And treasury report. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Item A, we have in the report for tonight is the approval of the personal committee meeting minutes. Item B, regular meeting minutes for April. Item C is approval of the financial reports. I don't know about the form for forming. Very bottom. Sorry. The biggest thing to note here is expenditure side. We can scroll around this a little bit. How far? That's good, right there. The alpha and expenditures, the percentages on that. The second right, far right column. We're in the eighties, sixties and seventy percent. That's what we should be spending for the year. We're a little lower on all those. So again, it just goes back to the fact, I think we're doing a really good job of not spending too much by this. Even this year, we're spending less than this, so forth. Those are all good signs. That's really the main jobs I have. We'll report the financial report for this month. Item D is acceptance of donations. We do have a couple of donations. New Richmond Lions Sports Foundation is donating seven thousand dollars to high school athletics. Always, always appreciate our donations. Item E, we have two confirming purchase orders. These are just invoices to come in without a purchase order. Sometimes they just come through and slip through a cratch. And the auditors want us to make sure that you're aware of those. Doesn't cost us any more money. An expenditure anyway, just kind of make sure we put out the front, everybody can see that. And that is all I have for the treasury.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the items thirteen A through item thirteen E. Sub move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Redford?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
All right. Again, we're still with you with the five-year forecast. Here are, I don't know, first, for me, I'm gonna pass out two five-year forecasts. First one coming around is the forecast that's approved last November, that's our fall forecast. The second one is the new forecast that we're presenting for this May, twenty-two, twenty-three. And typically, we, of course, are required as a republic school district to submit two five-year financial forecasts to the Ohio Department of Education. The May-spring forecast is usually typically pretty incremental, not a lot of big changes. The bigger ones are fall forecasts. However, the big change is a positive change. We do have the spring forecast. As I mentioned last, last November, we have been receiving some bridge money because we are a power plant district here in New Richmond. And we've seen the values of our power plant, remaining power plant foreclosed, reduce the value on the utility side. That may is qualified for a bridge payment the past two years. I sent an email probably about two months ago to Aaron Rousch, Ohio Department of Education. He's the financial leader up there, asking if he anticipates whether we'll see these bridge payments again by any budget. We responded back, it's the same language, it's in there for the next two years. Which is great news for us. I foresee us having those reductions again because of positive hub values and hub utility values. These plans are being reduced without us having anything to say. Already in the real estate side, hub values will actually increase. So I would have had built that into the forecast for the spring forecast. It does increase us one point seven million for this year twenty-four and one point seven million for this year twenty-five. I highlighted those changes for you, so you can see what those look like, what line items come in on. And of course, you can follow down to slide seven dot zero two and see if the cash balance and see if the changes take place there. Does it impact the need for revenue or some type of change in the future? It does just a little bit, but it's not much. But we'll take whatever we can get right now. And it's very big news. That's really the only change in the forecast. Everything else would have stayed the same, kind of not been this change. There's just not a lot of movement throughout this school year. If you see anything you'd like me to inquire about, I can certainly do that. Should be pretty apples to apples. Some small changes based on what we spent this year. They're not very bad, but nothing big.
Matt, on our last forecast from November, did we receive anything back from the state at all, based upon financials then? Just any notices or anything, just?
No, we have not.
Okay.
Nothing about, you mean about financial caution?
Correct.
We have not. That's a great question. So always anticipate, we'll get that in the seventh forecast. I think they're looking at our cash balance a lot and see if we're gonna try to maybe work on that since we have a decent cash balance and have the same. Any ideas? Great question.
Matt, you like to remind us all the time that the biggest percentage of our budget is staff? Does the spring forecast build in any adjustments based on retirements and new hires yet?
Not yet. Not yet. And certainly just do an average on that. The big change for twenty-four is gonna be that some of those federal funds are drying up that we used to toss in those salaries and benefits. It's mostly a jump in that as well, next step next side. And that's part of what's gonna cause this, some of our year deficits. You know, losing some of those federal funds, losing the power plants, and we're closing down a lot of that revenue, million dollars of revenue. That's true.
Any other questions? It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the fire year forecast as presented.
Sub move.
I'll second. Second.
Any other discussions before we leave? All right. Roll call. Mr. Redford?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Academic report.
Good evening. It's really exciting for me to be able to present to you our recommendations for our math revision and adoptions. We began our math revision process last August. Hard to believe that it's been that long. Our committees have worked for the entire year to revise our curriculum and to analyze what resources we've been using and what we would like to use that would be best for our children. Last year, when we began our revision cycle with ELA, I honestly did not think that it would be possible to work again with a group of teachers who were as committed to that process and who were as professional as those English teachers were. I was incorrect. The K-12 math teachers have been equally dedicated to the achievement of our students and have worked tirelessly this entire year to make the best decisions possible for our district and to make our program recommendations to the Board of Education. I'd like to recognize and to thank three of our math teachers who are here this evening, Mr. Hilton, Mr. Jackson and Mrs. Zimmerman, and our administrators. All of them have worked all year on these math committees. Our revision, as, just as with our ELA revision, was an opportunity for us to reflect on our practice of teaching math in our classrooms. And we began our very first meeting of the year with what do we want our math classes to feel like and to sound like and to look like? It was a chance to challenge our own ideas. If we've been teaching it a certain way, is that the best way? Can we tweak that? Do we need to completely overhaul that? What would be the best for our students? And a time to reconsider and adjust in the light of new ideas and further evidence. Things change and we can always be better in how we present information and curriculum to our children. So, the goals of our math revision were to, number one, provide a strong math curriculum for kindergarten through twelfth grade. It was really important for us to have that aligned so that we weren't doing one thing in elementary, one thing in, in secondary, and to choose the best programs for K-5 and for 612. It was really important for me, and I asked the committees at the very beginning of our process, I did not want us to have more than two different math programs. Math is a very analytical subject and it needs to be a, a very well-balanced presentation of curriculum that doesn't move back and forth. So I didn't want us to choose a program for K-2, another program for 35, and another program for middle school, and then something for algebra and algebra two and geometry. We all agree that it would just be too disruptive in the process of learning math, that it would be fine to have something developmentally appropriate for K-5 and maybe something else, a different program for 612, but they needed to be seamless in that transition and it needed to be no more than two programs. Thirdly, we wanted to, to develop a guaranteed curriculum that aligned with the state standards. And by guaranteed curriculum, it means that our curriculum would be the same regardless of the school that a child attends or the teacher to which they're assigned. So every third grade teacher would receive, I'm sorry, student would receive the same math curriculum as every other third grade student. And that our math program would provide for both conceptual understanding and procedural skills and fluency. We didn't want it to be too heavy on one or the other. And the committees talked about programs they've had or worked with in the past in various districts where it was possibly was heavy on one or the other and felt like it was a gap in students' learning. So, we had some critical components for our math instruction. And these are the necessary elements for all of our math classes and essential in any program that we would recommend to the board. And we all agreed that these were completely critical for what we wanted to see. The texts and activities had to be meaningful, real world, and relevant. We didn't just want problems in a math textbook that students had to solve. The standards of mathematical practice should be present. And I think I spoke to, spoke to you about that several months ago, about the standards for mathematical practice. The instructions should build on students' prior knowledge and experiences, which goes to our no more than two programs. We wanted the knowledge to build like math does. Discourse and collaboration were critical components of student learning. So we strongly believe, and all of our teachers agreed, that math classes should be full of activity, discussion, and group work, not an isolated endeavor and not students working on just a device or students working in isolation. The students need to be asked challenging, open-ended questions and had to give, and need to give evidence for their thinking. So lots of talking again, and also lots of writing in a math class. Why did you, why did you solve the problem that way? Is there another way to solve it? Materials need to include differentiated lessons, activities, and ways students should consider success. And students should have and be able to use a broad and extensive mathematical vocabulary. So when we went to look at math programs after a year of looking at the mathematical practices and standards in the state of Ohio and what we had currently been doing and using, we started looking at math programs that were available. We reviewed many programs. All the ones that we looked at received highest rating reports on Ed Reports, which analyzes math programs and ELA programs. And we wanted the highest ratings on focus, coherence, rigor, the mathematical practices, and usability for teachers. We also researched the math programs currently being used in twenty neighboring districts in every grade level band. We wanted to see what were, what were the most commonly used programs, which districts had new programs, which didn't have any programs, and what they were using. And our teachers even went the next step and started looking at the scores and achievement level of those districts. So if District A is using Program B, how is that working for them? How long have they been using that? Are their math scores where we would want our math scores to be? Then we scheduled presentations for our grade bands of K-5 and 612 by various publishers. When we listened to those presentations, we had a rubric for how we wanted to evaluate those programs. And we rated the programs on this list of items. We wanted to make sure that our students were using hands-on manipulatives, that there were activities to build both that conceptual understanding and to practice procedural fluency with math. The program had to be aligned to the Ohio's mathematical learning standards. We wanted there to be spiral review so that students didn't learn one thing and then never see that again, had to come back to it. We looked at the quality of the assessments that were involved in the program. We wanted there to be a valuable online component at the secondary level. Not so much online and elementary. We wanted the students to be engaged with the math in the classroom. We thought it was important that there were consumable student workbooks so that students were actually not doing all of their work on a device, but doing work in a book and that they would have that book to take home, to bring back to class. They could take their notes, use it to study from. There needed to be intervention supports, enrichment supports, and we really wanted the programs to help our teachers make math class engaging and fun for students to learn. Early on, Mr. Hilton actually said at one of our early meetings that one of the saddest parts of teaching math and one of the biggest concerns is that by the time students get to middle school and certainly after that, they already know whether they like math or not, and so many of them don't. And part of that, a big part of that is they don't feel like they can do it very well or they don't feel comfortable with math, and that's hard to overcome. So we want to make math something they can feel successful with and also that's fun to work on. So, after all of that year, we have two recommendations. Our first is our elementary K-5 recommendation. We would like to submit that, we would like to implement the Bridges program, publishers, the Math Learning Center. In Bridges, some of the highlights, the learning is very collaborative. This is a print-based program, K-5. The learning is a process of constructing meaning to make sense of concepts. Students develop very early as their number sense and their understanding of what mathematics is. The learning requires perseverance and the willingness to experience, I'm going to try to say this word correctly, disequilibrium. And we want students to be comfortable with not knowing how to solve something because there's a lot of learning that takes place when you, when you have to figure it out and you have to talk to your friends and the other students in your class and to your teacher about why would this work and why would that not work? Students in this program view solved problems using visual models and manipulatives. They make and test conjectures while recording their thinking, there's a lot of writing. Students talk and move around the classroom as they actively engage and learn. There are three components in this math, in a Bridges math class. They work on problems and investigations. They have workplaces where they, where they practice their work, and there's a number corner. In the Bridges program, there's ninety minutes devoted every day to mathematics, K through five. Currently, we have been using for several years, the Bridges Intervention Program. It's a very high-quality intervention program that we use for our special education students. And so, this program would tie in seamlessly with that. Students would get their core instruction in their math class. And when they're pulled for intervention, it's the same program, same con, the same content, same standards being worked on for their interventions. I'm not going to read these to you, but I did want to say there are, there are lots, more than I could ever list, grade level standards for each of the grade levels, K through five. It's a, it's a building time in mathematical understanding. But this program focuses on three or four, except for kindergarten, two, critical areas of focus that are clearly spelled out and everything that they learn in that grade really focuses on those areas so that by the time they get through fifth grade, they're prepared for going into sixth grade and higher-level mathematics. So I'll just give you an example. In first grade, there are areas of focus, those are those four. Addition and subtraction within twenty, whole number relationships and place value, linear measurement, and reasoning with shapes and their attributes. Some of our teachers in the elementary group made some visits to another district that used Bridges. And one of the teachers in that district said to our teachers who were visiting, when we first started implementing this program, it said, you know, ask these questions, the students will respond with some of these kinds of answers. And then this is, you know, how you lead the conversation from there. And the teachers in that district said to our teachers, we said, there is no way that our students will say that. They're, they're not going to say that. And they said, after a couple of months, by God, their students did say that. It was, they were astonished by how much math thinking and mathematical reasoning the program helped them develop. So I'll just, those are the four critical components for grade two. The four for grade three, you can see them getting, building on each other. It's, it's a very deliberately thought-out program and approach to teaching math. Grade four, we've moved into not only developing fluency in multiplication, but they're under, they're developing understanding of multi-digit multiplication in fourth grade. So it's a very rigorous program also. And then in fifth grade, fractions and multiplication and division of fractions. And their third area of focus is volume. So, all of, all of those standards are very thought-out going into sixth grade. Then our second recommendation is for our sixth through twelfth grade. Our committees are recommending the Envision program, and it is published by Satus Learning Company. This program helps develop deep conceptual understanding. The thought, the theory behind this decision, the both of these decisions were that this level of rigor and developing foundational skills in mathematics would lead perfectly for our fifth graders then going into the Envision program to have, be able to handle that kind of conceptual understanding that this program requires. There's a lot of problem-based learning and visual learning, the deepens conceptual understanding of math. In the middle school program in Envision, there is a visual component almost every day to this program that presents a math problem, and the students work themselves to solve that problem. Envision personalizes learning. There are lots of formative and some of assessments that drive differentiated instruction and help the teachers decide what needs to be enriched or worked on. Uses student data to inform instruction and it gives teachers really in-depth information about how the students are doing. The lessons are designed to build students' confidence, to think mathematically and solve problems on their end, which is a continuation of what the Bridges program will have them doing as elementary students. The lessons provide a vehicle for building conceptual understanding through productive struggle. Again, you see that, that's another synonym for disequilibrium, but productive struggle. They shouldn't come, they shouldn't be able to do a problem so easily that it's sort of just memorized or following a formula. We really want them, our students, to be able to think mathematically and to reason and to sometimes get it wrong and have to figure it out. There are high-interest math projects that invite all students to be active participants. There are STEM projects embedded within the program. Math Excel and Desmos are embedded in the Envision platform. We won't have to purchase those separately. When they're needed in the program, they're included in the program. Every student will have a consumable workbook or textbook for problem solving and note-taking, like I mentioned before. The high school courses, there are three courses in Envision, algebra, geometry, and algebra two. The classes in sixth through twelfth grade are also, just like Bridges, based on a ninety-minute lesson. In sixth through twelfth grade, we have forty-five-minute classes. And so, just like almost all other middle school and high schools, this program plans that each lesson would take two days. And so the teachers have two days to do each lesson, and that's how it's paced and that's how it's laid out within the program. All of our teachers on, on our sixth and twelfth grade committee were unanimous in thinking that, and recommending, feeling very strongly that this is the program that would best meet the needs of their students. There were ten, all ten teachers, and all ten teachers feel like, felt like that this was the best program. Our elementary committee, we have more than ten teachers on that committee. And so, all of them also recommended Bridges. There were a few teachers who thought that we looked at another program that's a little more traditional, a little more similar to what we've been doing. And they said, you know, this, this may be really challenging for some of our teachers to teach with this kind of rigor. One of the teachers on, I don't remember who it was, this is a, one of the teachers on that committee said, if we want to, if we want to make a change and do things that are best for our students, if we implement Bridges, we will be in a different place ten years from now than we are now. And we will, we will be further ahead than we are now in math. So, that was a strong endorsement for this program. So this, I'm presenting those two recommendations for first reading this evening. The Envision program in hard copy is set up in the large conference room next door, labeled by grade level. And then I've given you, at the Bridges program, the online resources to review. Are there any questions that you can think of, or I have the teachers, some teachers there may be able to address?
We are very excited.
If I may, I would say I've been in the district quite a while. I've been through several adoptions with not just math, but other programs. This was the most thorough, complete, rigorous, I'm throwing that word out there again, adoption we've ever been through. This is the way we should have done it the last thirty years to this. This is, and I kind of hinted at what I have put in. This is going to get us a lot further down the road than anything we've ever done. We're going to ask the kids to do more than they ever thought they could do through the program. I'll stay. I'll stay. Thanks, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you.
All right, I'm still here. You reminded me of something for a change, but. So we also have three new courses that we're implementing this coming school year. The first one is a new course in our ELA department, Advanced Horror and Literature. And this is, would be offered as a semester-long honors-level English elective. And that English teachers wrote this graded course of study extremely well-done. It would cover units and an introduction to the horror genre of literature. It covers Gothic horror, psychological horror, including The Descent Into Madness, the supernatural in literature, including hauntings and monsters. And it has a part of a unit on film and how cinematic elements create effect and how characterizations develop through dialogue, actions, and costume choices in film. The regular horror and literature class has been very popular, and there are students who are coming out of AP courses who would really like to take this course but need and want it to be a higher level. So it's the same genre, but much more advanced works and literature choices. The next one is, I think this one's Financial Literacy. Mr. Stewart mentioned this when he was speaking. Financial literacy is now a required high school course in the state of Ohio. We have incorporated our topics from our college and career readiness course with the new state standards in financial literacy. And it's a semester-long course taught at the sophomore level, covering topics about banking, taxes, retirement, employee benefits, a unit on job applications and job interviews, what to do pre-interview and what to do post-interview, budgets. There's a unit on credit and how to use credit responsibly, and investments and investing in stocks as well as other investments like mutual fund, mutual funds, 401Ks, and bonds, et cetera. I think I should give this course. And then our third course, graded course of study, is our Transition to Algebra course. This would be the Applied Algebra class that we've talked about previously for those incoming freshmen who need to improve their mathematical foundation to be ready for a traditional Algebra I course, so they would take this as freshmen. It's a year-long course. It covers things like the language of algebra, number lines, decimals and number lines, area and multiplication, reasoning with equations, coordinate planes, fractional slopes and graphs, factoring and equivalent expressions, and exponents. All of these graded courses of study were written by teachers. They spent the entire year writing these, and they're, they're all three very well, very well done, linked in the agenda, and those are being presented for first reading this evening.
Dr. Hollen, with the new rigorous math curriculum, the need for this course a few years down the road? Maybe sunset, or what do you think?
Our, our thought is that we would only need this for a couple of years as these, as our children start coming out of fifth grade using the Bridges program and entering in having the Envision program and then sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We believe that they would be quite capable of handling algebra as freshmen. Or possibly, our ultimate goal is that we would have most of our eighth graders taking algebra as middle-grade students for high school credit. In the Envision program, there is a sixth, there's a sixth-grade curriculum, there's a seventh-
In the Envision program, there is a 6th grade curriculum, there's a 7th grade curriculum, there's also an advanced 7th grade curriculum that we would be purchasing for our advanced 7th graders. Research shows that if you're going to be compact curriculum in math, it's best done in 7th and 8th grade. To leave 6th grade where it is, there are a lot of new standards that happen in 6th grade, you can compact that 7th and 8th grade curriculum in 7th grade. We could offer that course to most of our 7th graders, 80% or so in a few years, and have our 8th graders, most of them, take algebra for high school credit. But certainly, we would be able to offer algebra as freshmen even sooner, and we wouldn't need the Applied Algebra or Transition to Algebra course after a couple of years.
Thank you.
Can I come there and give? So what I'm passing out to you, I guess it's technically the second draft of a brochure that you put together. Going to hand it out at things like the River Fest that's coming up, the Fourth of July celebrations, things like that. You might notice mine looks a bit bigger than yours because, Gregory, I can't count. I thought I printed all eight of them, but there are seven. You guys have the updated one, I have an old one, and you might see me in some of those more rigorous math classes next year. We just wanted to make it a little bit easier for people to learn more about the district, kind of give them something that they could have in their hands, something tangible to help really just kind of put our story out there and put our brand out there. There are some changes that still need to be made, but if you look on the inside flap here on the left-hand side, that's an awful lot of words for fast facts. So we're going to make some changes to that, just little things like that to kind of help people get an understanding of what we are here in the district, what we do, and how we do it. It's the first brochure I've ever made, so it'll be a process. This is the first draft in my hand, second draft in yours, so just wanted to give you something to look at.
You did a good job, Gar. Thank you so much.
Over the last month or so, I have had the pleasure to go out and watch a lot of our kids perform. I was at Malamia, the high school kids did a great job there, went to the Acapella concert a little bit after that, they looked fantastic. Some local elementary schools, I watched you and Bub, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, thank you.
On Thursday last week, the middle school held their end-of-year band and choir concert, and the band was fantastic, the choir was fantastic. At the end, since it was their first concert since they lost Ethan Kane, the middle school choir dedicated a song specifically to him, and Tracy's going to play it for you in a second.
Probably not too many dry eyes in the house.
No. That was a well-deserved standing ovation. And I'm sorry, Tim, I know you. He was sitting right next to me. Well, that's the first time, so this is the second time he's.
I cheered up that day.
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you for presenting.
Thank you.
All right. We should do adjournments. Anybody have a mission?
I'll sit in second.
Second. All right, roll call. Mr. Fall?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rup?
Yes.
Mr. Zer?
Yes.
Thanks everybody.